We'll call this meeting to order, please rise from the Pudge of Allegiance and the indication following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials, grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Real call, please.
Alan Green.
Here.
Ms. Stravich.
Here.
Reindell.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Motion to approve the minutes for the City Council meeting of August 5th would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion made in support, any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Audience comments on any non-agenda items, anybody like to address the City Council that's on a subject that's not on the agenda? Come to the podium, state your name and address for the clerk. Nobody will move on. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager.
I would just add one item, under other business, number two, consideration of approving department director and non-affiliated salary increases.
Thank you. City Council, any changes? Motion to accept the agenda as amended would be in order.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion made in support, any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion made in support, there is no discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to the public hearing this evening, which we have won, the Resolution 2019-16 IFT request. Mr. City Manager.
In accordance with industrial facility tax exemption policy for the city of Richmond adopted in March 2000, council is scheduled to hold a public hearing on an industrial facility exemption certificate, commonly referred to as an IFT, for Masters Machine, a CNC company located at 69215 Skinner Drive, and Resolution 2019-16, a resolution establishing the Industrial Development District. Council administration have discussed this application at the July Quarterly Roundtable. The resolution officially places their property within an industrial development district and administration has reviewed the application and has determined that it meets the requirements of the city's policy.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make the motion to open the public hearing for Resolution 2019-16, Resolution establishing an industrial development district and the industrial facilities exemption certificate, commonly referred to as the IFT, for Holon Holdings LLC doing business as Masters Machine at 6:04. Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Our public hearing is open. Is there anybody that'd like to address this at this time? There is an action item after this. Okay, any other comments by administration? Okay, City Council? Then a motion to close the public hearing would be in order.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing at 6:04 PM.
Support.
Motion made in support, any discussion? Being not, it's gotta be the world's fastest public hearing. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on now to items for consideration, this evening we have nine. The first one being consideration of Resolution 2019-16, the IFT request. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider the industrial facilities exemption certificate application submitted by Masters Machine. They are a CNC company located at 69215 Skinner Drive and Resolution 2019-16, a resolution establishing them as part of an industrial development district. Council and administration have discussed this at the Quarterly Roundtable. Masters Machine was the first applicant and property owner in the new thirty-two acres of industrially zoned property that we had. This is part of the process that we talked about with them to get them to come to Richmond. They're, as I mentioned, a computer numeric, I had that somewhere and I'm gonna mess it up, but CNC.
CNC.
Yeah, machining company, they do work for the aerospace, automotive, and optical industries. And they've applied for this, if approved at the local level, it will then go up and the State Tax Commission at MEDC will review the application. As we discussed at the Roundtable, this will give them a break on fifty percent of their taxes on all, from all taxing authorities with the exception of the state education tax, which then they pay that full amount. But everything else will be at fifty percent. Administration's recommendation is for twelve years.
Very good, thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-16, a resolution establishing the Industrial Development District in agreement dated August 19, 2019, with Masters Marine outlining the conditions of the industrial facilities exemption for a period of twelve years. Support.
Motion made and supported. Discussion. Quite a bit of discussion at our Roundtable workshop. Everybody was very favorable in getting this one done.
And the owners, Steve and Joe, are here tonight if there are any questions on the plant back there.
Does anybody have any questions, the owners? I think we've studied this pretty hard already. Do you guys have anything you want to say? Okay, no pressure.
We're putting a lot of pressure on you.
Is there anybody else that wanted to say anything to the City Council, any comments on this? Okay. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Good luck. Hope this works. Do we have any idea, John, I should have asked this, well, do we have any idea what the timeline is with the MEDC?
I don't, I'll probably be meeting with Steve tomorrow to make sure all of our paperwork and we have a couple things for us to sign tonight. It'll all go into the State Tax Commission, I think they act on them.
Reasonably.
Reasonably well, but they have like a certain schedule of their meetings, much like a council, so it'll probably go to their next meeting, so I can't really say, I'm not sure when that meeting is.
Very good. Good luck. Item number two is consideration of the second reading and adoption ordinance number 148-2, amendments to cross connections. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider giving second reading and adopt ordinance 148-2, which amends the water and sewer ordinance. As mentioned at the last council meeting, the city's current water and sewer ordinance was adopted in 2001 and at a recent site visit by Eagle, formerly the DEQ, they had suggested or made their strong recommendation that we update our ordinance to match the current state law.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of ordinance 148-2 for the protection of the public water supply from cross connections.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Is there any discussion? Is this a mandate? It's a recommendation, but yet it's a state law, so does that make it a mandate?
I guess I don't consider it a mandate, they just had certainly recommended that our ordinances be updated as things change. The original ordinance did and still does reference the cross connection manual through the DEQ or now Eagle, so are we out of compliance in any way if we chose not to, no, but it is good to kind of clarify, so there's better understanding of expectations.
Okay, alright.
And I probably have some different answer as far as what the history we've had with the state.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
I think it could certainly be looked at that way, you know, that we're gonna spend money with municipal code and everything, it's that death of a thousand cuts we've talked about with with other things through the state, I mean certainly water quality isn't something we wanna fight with the state, you know, and we wouldn't want that. But it's certainly causing us to spend money through municipal code and everything to have our ordinances codified, you know, based on a change in the state law.
Yeah, okay. Alright. Any other discussion at the table? Anything from the audience? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number three is consideration of adopting the cross connection control program. Mr. City Manager.
The Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, otherwise known as Eagle, requested the city update its cross connection ordinance and also recommended a formal cross connection control program document to clarify the expectations during the recent sanitary survey. The attached program was created by our Public Service Director, Jim Gutzinger. Certainly we already had a program in place, but it wasn't necessarily documented in a specific way, and so this does that. In those instances of leeway, such as any new requirements that the state is requiring, such as inspection of residential properties for that have cross connections, we took kind of the conservative approach of having those as infrequent as allowable by the state law, to lessen the impact to our residents.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make the motion to approve the cross connection control program document as presented.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion on this item? You stated in your brief that there may not be any consequence financially to our water rate, to, in other words.
Yeah, we are already contracting with Tetra Tech to perform inspections. The fact of writing the document doesn't change that obligation or expectation from Tetra Tech. This would be as simple as ways, kind of a standard operating procedure, putting it in writing of what we are already essentially doing.
Okay, so basically we're just talking about people that have wells.
Uh, no, examples of, the primary purpose is to see are there any cross connections, so they want inspections to make sure there aren't cross connections, that could be a variety of ways, irrigation systems are a big one, that's the primary one for residences. If there's any chemicals boilers that are connected to the water supply, potentially can have what's called a cross connection where it could go back into the public water supply, and there's a variety of circumstances that would allow that to happen, but we're gonna protect it, so we.
So Jim, it's inspection of backflow preventers, then?
That's in part of this program, yes.
Okay, okay, so how many are we talking, I mean, the way I'm reading that, we have to inspect every single water user?
Well, recently, a significant change in recent history, the DEQ or now Eagle has encouraged communities to begin inspections of residential properties, we've tried to facilitate that by just through new constructions, doing an inspection. But now that it is written that every so often, now the maximum is ten years, they would like to see all the properties, residential properties inspected, so we have approximately twenty-seven hundred, I guess twenty-five hundred properties that are on our system connections, so that residences are the majority of those. So we are, that is a two hundred extra inspections a year, potentially that we have. The Eagle has been pretty lenient as far as not, if you don't meet that requirement, at least in the past, if you don't meet that requirement for whatever the requirement is now, that's a new one, but past recurrence for inspection, it's not like there's some immediate recourse. They're just saying, hey, try to do better next year, so right now they're kind of in this, they know that we're in a learning stage, so there's time where we gotta try to figure out how to make this work.
So it does create a, I would say it does create a cost factor to the.
Potentially, yeah.
And this one for sure, the ordinance, this one, I do believe so.
I think it's a great thing to let our state representative know that, again, I'm gonna call it a mandate. I thought they learned their lesson, they're not supposed to be mandating programs without financing it at the state level. But Jeff Yarick has tried to make that clear, here's another perfect example for him, I'd like to see this forward to him, so he knows here's another area, state's mandating, it's not that it's a bad thing, it's just if you're gonna make us do that, then you better finance it, you better, there's gotta be a cost if we're having to inspect at least two hundred a year, there's gotta be a cost to that. And this is what the state continues to do to us, so I, can I get a consensus from council, we send this on to our representatives at the state level?
Absolutely.
And let them know, here's another one.
The unfunded mandates need to stop.
Yep.
And it's similar to the reason we joined that lawsuit that worked its way through recently.
Yep. Okay. Is there any other questions, comments, guys? Anybody from the audience? Okay, back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number four is consideration of West Richmond subdivision condominium construction plan approval. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider approving the condominium construction plan review for the West Richmond condominium development, which is a fifty-four lot site condominium development on twenty-five point five acres of property located directly west of the Richwood Forest subdivision. For the site condominium developments, condominium construction plan review shall be considered the equivalent of a final plat review. So essentially what happened is after all of the comments from the council and the planning commission prior to this, through the first couple of reviews, all of those were added to this set of plans and the master deed and everything was drawn up, and so everything in front of you, or before you tonight is what's been approved by council and planning commission.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the condominium construction plan for the West Richmond condominium development consisting of fifty-four lots on twenty-five point five acres of property located on the western terrace of the Woodside Drive, Richwood Lane and Diane Lane, so.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion? Any audience comments? Back to the table. Again, this has been read and reread and reworked and.
The additional lights and crosswalk movements that are changes that we had are all part of this current version of plan.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number five is consideration of board appointment. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider making an appointment to the Tax Assessment Board of Review. We recently had a member notify us that he will be moving out of town shortly and will no longer be able to serve on the board. And we did receive an application from Marilyn Frank.
Thank you. I asked Marilyn to serve on this board, her husband serves on Planning Commission, they're very involved in our community and she also has about twenty years of banking in our community, so she understands the whole mortgages and the real estate issues in our town and I think she's gonna do an excellent job, and I certainly hope we can appoint her to this board. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to appoint, reappoint, appoint Marilyn Frank to the Tax Assessment Board of Review to an unexpired term with the expiration date of December 31st, 2020.
Correct.
Support.
Motion made and support. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I agree, she is fantastic, a smiling face all the time, will be a great asset to this board as she will have a, she just has great experience with it.
Anybody else? Any audience comments on this? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Does pass, we thank her for her service and, was it?
Daryl Conrad, yeah, it's his term that wasn't expired, that she will be.
He's moving out of town.
Correct.
We appreciate his service also to the Board of Review, not an easy job. Okay, item number six is consideration of designating an MML voting delegate and alternate voting delegate. Mr. City Manager.
The Michigan Municipal League Annual Convention will be held in Detroit on September 25th through the 27th. There were some questions on the cost and whether or not they had a daily rate and what was on the agenda. So our city clerk contacted the MML, unfortunately there is no such thing as a daily rate, it's the rate of the convention. But all of the information is in your packet.
Thank you. If council would agree with me, I would like to drop the rules right now, so that we can talk about this before we name somebody, if we're going to name somebody, based on our last conversation. Is that okay with the City Council?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. John brought the numbers up that Jamie had brought up, about the five hundred and some odd, $5.99 or whatever it is. And looking at what is available as far as breakout classes, it doesn't look like a lot of that has much to do with the job of a councilman in the city of Richmond. My opinion.
There were, there were just three that I noticed, there was a social media one, a perks and recs asset plan, and a food truck 101.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, I guess, I thought about this a lot more, and it is in Detroit. I guess, do we, do we see value in attending at all? If we see value in attending at all, this would be the one to send somebody to, since it is so close and we wouldn't need a hotel, but if we don't see value in sending anybody anymore, then.
I guess that's the point that I'm trying to make, is do we even wanna appoint somebody for this particular meeting? I don't know, I don't see the value in it, as was talked before. I think the twist of some of those that I also saw, the twist of that, it seems as though it's more administrative than it is for a council person, the way I see it.
Well, are we allowed to point the city manager to go? I mean.
Yeah, is it the MML or SOMCOG that you're not supposed to be?
SOMCOG, I can't, can't be the delegate, I can be the alternate. I don't know on the MML if they have any rules like that. I know managers often attend the conference, whether they can be your voting member or not, that, you know, that I don't know. Off the top of my head, I know SOMCOG, I can be the alternate, but can't be the delegate.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I noticed that some of the, a lot of it, because it is based in Detroit, a lot of the outside workshops and things are all towards that, which is good for people that come from, say, Traverse City and come down for this, gives them an opportunity to see the revitalization of Detroit or something like that. Because normally I like that too, when they have those events that are in areas that I normally don't get to. But in this case, I'm in Detroit quite a bit, so I don't feel justified enough to go to it, even though it's easy for me since I work that way, but I would rather have somebody else that's not so familiar with what's happening go, if we send anybody at all.
Do you see that, that, any of that relates to our community?
At a smaller level, but no, not looking at the list like you did, there's nothing that pops out.
Any other discussion as far as, should we be sending a representative?
I guess I have one more comment. So the other comment is, if we don't send anybody, I guess we should make note of that, because who knows, maybe next year there'll be something that warrants us to go and then we can justify, you know, sending one or two people by saying, hey, we didn't, we didn't go last year, because we did, we went through it, we did our due diligence and didn't find anything worthwhile, but this year we do, so we're gonna take advantage of it.
Absolutely.
So.
At $450.
And there's no break, if we wanted to go for the, you know, one day to vote and to look at, there's no break. I think there used to be.
It seemed like it used to be.
I know in the MML staffs, the City Manager Convention too, the managers handle all the breakout sessions and things like that, but they handle the registration, and we've always had a day rate and a, you know, a three-day rate, so to speak. So I was kind of surprised unless they've changed that recently.
Well, the other thing is evidently it's not in their bylaws, but you know, in a case like this, what about proxy voting? We're voting on behalf of the city of Richmond, do we actually physically have to be there when we are getting the information on who it is that's running for those positions? So going back to, you know, the topic of the item for consideration is is consideration of designating somebody for this annual meeting. Is that something that the council wants to do is gonna be the question after the discussion? If we're done with the discussion, then I would, I would call for a motion. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna move to name Mayor Proton, Mike Mr. Avich, as the city's designated MML representative for one year. I haven't talked to Mike about this, so.
No, I'm fine, yeah, I mean, like I mentioned in past meetings, I enjoy.
I'll support that motion.
The reason I do that is so that we do have a designee, whether or not council wants to approve sending our designee to any certain conference or annual meeting or whatever it may be, will be up to the council at a regular council meeting. But on record, this is our person. Just so that we don't have to go through this if it happens again. I think, isn't there another conference, winter conference?
Yeah, there's the Capitol.
Legislative days.
Okay, okay. Motion's been made and support discussion on that. Any audience comments? Back to the table?
I'd just be happy to represent the City Council as a delegate.
Did a good job in the past for many, many years. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there any other motion to be made under this item? We will move on. Item number seven is consideration of bid award DPW fencing. Mr. City Manager.
A split-faced block wall was constructed around roughly half of the DPW yard in 2017. In the current budget, we have funds to replace the chain link fence that surrounds the other half of the yard from the galvanized chain link to the black vinyl coated fencing.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to authorize the expense of $12,900 for completion of the 2019 DPW fence project. Nationwide fence with the expense charged, appropriate line items and general major street, local street, sanitary sewer water and Tiffa fence.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on this item? So this is all fence, is the way I understand when you say fifty percent.
What's remaining in, yep, aside from the block wall, of course.
So everything between the property owner on the south side of the DPW yard, all of that also?
Correct.
Okay, great, great. Came in quite a ways under budget also.
And local.
Yes, yeah, very good. Any other comments, questions? Any audience comments on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number eight is consideration of bid award for the DPW concrete repairs. Mr. City Manager.
A new salt bin was constructed at the DPW yard in 2018. After the first season of use, it was determined that the concrete apron in front of the bin should be extended. And the current budget includes funds for that project. Although we only received one bid, it's a contractor that has done work and performed well on other city projects and Jim has reviewed the unit prices and their. And Jim has reviewed the unit prices, and they're consistent with recent project pricing of similar sized projects.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to authorize the expense of $13,700 for completion of the 2019 DPW concrete project by GM and Sons with expenses charged to the appropriate line items and the general major street, local street, sanitary sewer, water and TIF funds.
Support was been made and support. Any discussion on this item? Came in under budget? So he's inflating all of his. Makes you look good, doesn't it, Jim? Yeah. Okay. This is going to finish off the salt barn, basically. You're bringing it out farther away from the front, the opening of the barn. Is that what it is?
Yeah, the initial, the construction included just the first 10 feet, and we're extending it an additional 20 feet so that it needs it, yeah.
Yeah, very good, very good. Okay. Any other discussion? It's going to look awful nice over there.
Yeah.
Any audience comments on this item?
No, chief.
Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Our final item is consideration bid award overband crack filling. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider awarding the 2019 overband crack filling contract. This is the third year that we've gone out to bid for the overband crack filling. This current contractor, that's the low bidder, performed the work in 2019 or 2018 as well.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to award the 2019 overband crack filling contract contract 2019 SR dash four in the amount of $20,675 and 30 cents to Wolverine Crack Sealing with the expenses charged to the appropriate line item and the major street fund and local street funds.
Support.
Was been made and doubly supported. Any discussion? It's definitely has helped save our streets, I believe, good practice that you brought for our city.
Based on the data that we're obviously using to make those decisions, it's the cost per lane mile is certainly significantly less than reconstructed. So if we get even a few years out of of extension out of this practice, it's a benefit to the city.
Very good. Any other comments, questions? Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Miscellaneous manage from the city manager, sir.
Last Thursday, I was able to attend the final summer concert in the park in the pavilion and just wanted to thank senior helpers for once again sponsoring those concerts this summer.
Very good. Okay, moving on. Council comments. Dennis?
Oh, I'm good.
Rob?
Nothing.
John?
Nothing.
Emily?
Nothing tonight.
Jamie?
First tackle game on Saturday and poured here on.
Very good. It's a sign of fall. I don't like that already. And Michael?
Just the reminder, city manager evaluations are due to me. So if you could, if you want the paper copy and fill that out, just put it in my mailbox. Send me a note and I'll pick it up so I can compile the results and get together with the committee to go over those.
Very good. Today being August 19th, we have a TIF meeting on the 28th at 7 o'clock right here at City Hall. Labor Day weekend will begin for the city on Saturday, the 31st. The library will be closed. It also will be closed on Monday, September 2nd, along with City Hall and the community center, and that's Labor Day. The next regular scheduled city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, the 3rd, and we'll be going back to our regular hours at 7 o'clock. The calendar or yes, the city calendar says it will be held at the Historical Society Schoolhouse. But due to certain agenda items, we've decided to bring that meeting back here to City Hall to accommodate if so needed, anybody. Also, that same evening at 7 o'clock is a recreation board meeting, which I assume will be held.
Yeah, yes.
Will be held.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Will have to be held at community center more likely?
That or the community room here. We'll probably normally they meet here. We'll probably put them in the.
Put them in the communities. Okay, right here at City Hall.
By the same building.
Okay.
That they normally meet.
Very good. And that's all I have for the for that. Moving on to closed session, we need a motion to go into closed session for the business of discussing a collective bargaining agreement. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to convene in closed session in accordance with section 8C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Public Act 267 of 1976 as amended for strategy negotiation sessions conducted in a negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement as requested by administration.
Support.
Was been made and supported. Is there any discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Green?
Yes.
LaFour?
Yes.
Ms. Stravich?
Yes.
Reindahl?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
We'll take a five minute break and reconvene into the closed session room. Okay, we need a motion to reconvene into open session.
So moved.
Support.
Was been made and supported. Any discussion? Be or not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. We're back into open session. We move on to other business. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to prove the term agreement with POEM patrol officer signed July 29, 2019.
Support.
Was been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Appreciate the administration's work on this and also our employees in the police department working out a good contract. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have one more motion for the department directors and non affiliated personnel. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the 2.5% raise for the department directors and non affiliated personnel working more than 20 hours per week annually.
Support.
Was been made and supported. Any discussion on this item? Again, we appreciate all the work done by the administration and the employees for another good contract. Anything else? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Was been made and support. There is no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us tonight.